We're on. Good afternoon. We'll open a Board of Selectmen's meeting Monday, June 27th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Point of order is June 7th.
What did I say?
Twenty-seventh.
Oh, seventh.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Persistent to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for, to conduct collective bargaining sessions with the highway, also with the water and sewer and the police department. We'll go into executive session.
Can you make the amendment to your motion, please, Mr. Chairman?
What is the amendment?
It's pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 22A, Section 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining would be the correct reference, I think.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. I need a second on the amendment.
Second on that, Marjorie.
The roll call, vote, any discussion on that? Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, Mike. Dan?
Affirmative, yes.
Affirmative. Same here. All right. That was on the amendment. We'll go into executive session.
So we turn our microphones off?
There we can. He's going to shut the TV.
Are we in recess, or are we back on?
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as we get the other two here, we can. What, we got fire drill?
Madam.
Oh.
It's all set up, that's when we're ready.
Yeah.
Everybody on Zoom can hear you. Everyone on Zoom can hear you.
Okay.
I printed this out because I thought it might be helpful. This is from one of those government committees that helps us know, like, when we should do things. I got one for everybody. Sort of a schedule for town.
Yeah, I got three of them here.
Yeah, that's to pass down. I gave one to Jason. I just gave him one.
When he comes back, I'll grab it.
One-pagers from one of those government committees that tells you when everything should be done. I always like the one-page summaries, it's easier. I don't know if he's a helpful information.
Feel bad for calling.
What's that?
I feel bad for calling.
I do, too.
While you're up, give that to Dan, please.
But you know it might not be bad.
We have a little extra in your paycheck.
And then to do the water and sewer, and they might agree quicker. We could probably do them if we meet with Sarah on that night. We could probably do this one on that night, too. We have to meet with Sarah on a Wednesday night.
I would hope this rest of this stuff here should take.
Only a few minutes, I think. Catherine was telling him that the people haven't gotten back, so a lot of that.
Yeah, so if we can get through this quickly enough, maybe we can go back to it finishing today.
He dedicated this offer by saying that he has to redistribute these routes. That's the big problem.
I think, like, all of Seven Star got pissed.
I know, well, there that Thursday.
Okay, we're back, we're back in open session.
I believe we have Roy still here.
Order of business, approve the warrants. Jason, I guess that fall on you again.
Sounds good. I make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2149 in the amount of $172,205.60.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I make a motion to approve bill warrant 2149 in the amount of $1,083,010.68.
Want my glasses?
Second.
That breaks down to the town, $37,796.91. Water and sewer, $10,235.55. Payroll withholding, $33,631.21. Light bills, $65,283.2 cents. Grants and revolving, $15,305.50. And ventucket assessment, $920,855.49.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Just before we get started, on, this past Friday, we lost a longtime member of the town, the town boards, Kermit Cross. He was a longtime light commissioner. He was a member of the fire department for a while. He was on the Board of Fire Engineers for a number of years. He assisted the former road commissioner when, when he was on vacation. He would substitute for him. He was the facilities manager here at the town hall. He did, he did about everything at the town hall and the public buildings. If anybody knows anything else that he, that he was involved in, I think I got most of them covered, but he was involved, he was a type of a guy that whenever there was something to be done, he would step up and do it. And that'll be a loss for the town. I know he resigned about a year ago from the light commission, didn't run. And that'll be a loss for the town of Groveland.
Thought it was mine again. My phone, I apologize. I thought my phone was gone.
So we'll, we'll just have a, have a moment of silence for former member, light commission, fire department, fire engineer, Kermit Cross. Okay, thank you. Next order of business, minutes approval. Approval of executive session minutes of 4:26, 2021. Anybody read them?
No, I moved the table that because, I don't know about anybody else, but I received this packet at 3:05 this afternoon, two hours and 55 minutes before this meeting while I was in work. So I've had a chance to review absolutely zero items on this agenda.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else got it earlier, but.
Well, there was, one thing that needs to be corrected is Kevin Livingston, attorney for Kevin Pagos, was not participating via Zoom. So that, that needs to be corrected. Yeah, but, motion to table the executive session minutes of 4:26, 2021.
Second.
All in favor of table?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Well, I should abstain, I wasn't involved.
Okay.
I'll abstain.
All in favor, one abstention.
I abstain, too.
Oh, Kathy Castren Ellis abstains, three.
Motion to table the approval of the board meetings from 5:18 for same reason.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to table the board meeting of 5:18, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
You need more time?
I need four to five minutes.
Four, one abstention. Discussion and possible vote. Waste management contract. Do we have?
He's.
Oh, yes. Mr. Boyer, you're on?
He says he's connecting to audio, he should be hearing him.
Oh, he couldn't hear me?
I think he's waiting to speak.
What's that again?
He's just waiting to speak, his audio is connecting.
Oh, okay. What's your pleasure, members? Do you want him to speak first?
Well, while we're waiting, if you, if it's okay, I could just fill you in that Catherine gave me the note from him. We had already discussed the barrel limits were, were out at four barrels per household right now, which is kind of out of alignment with most towns. And he suggested that we go to a two-barrel as a way to hopefully encourage recycling and reduce cost. He's suggesting here, if we decide in the new contract to go to the two-barrel, perhaps make it effective September 1st rather than July 1st, so it would give people time to get ready to go to two barrels. He talked to us about having the bag purchase, which would go along with the reduction to two barrels, so that you could purchase additional bags if you had occasion to have extra trash. Recycling would still be unlimited. We've already appropriated the first year's collection cost, contract cost, in our budget. And it would be a five-year contract. He is now sending regular updates to the Board of Health, to Lori, and to the chair, woman of the Board of Health. I get a copy as well. Anyone on this board can also get on the list if you want to know when there's a problem. They're sending out an email describing the problem and what's going to be done to reconcile it. But overall, in the beginning of his proposal to us, he said, "This offer is contingent upon the town of Groveland agreeing to allow waste management to make necessary routing changes to the current route schedule." So that is what's causing a lot of the delays at the end of the week, that there's too many houses on that he needs to redistribute. So if you want him to speak to that, he can. But we do need to make a decision on this tonight in order to go forward with this contract.
Okay, Mr. Boyer, you're up.
Well, he's still connecting, he's having issues.
Okay. So, well, does everybody have this, this document from, I know all of us had it, we're on the Zoom. He's here.
No, Mr. Surratt, at the top, we'd like to talk.
Oh. Oh. Could, could you hear, could you hear Selectman Kathy Castren Ellis? I don't think he can hear us at all.
I can hear you.
Oh, you can?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do you have some comments?
Yes, I was just trying to partake in the, the public comment period. So I don't know if that was on the agenda yet, or if you were just going as, as seat fit with the participants on this call, but I'm here for a public comment on one of your agenda items related to the community trail, the community path project.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
We're on trash, right?
It's up to you, I can wait, or if.
Waste management.
It says he's still trying to connect.
Oh, he's trying to connect?
I think he, I'm not sure.
I can't, I can't see that. You want to put that on hold until we can get him to connect? You, will you be able to tell when he's on?
Um, yes.
Do you have his number?
I do have his cell phone number.
You want to, want to bypass that till we are able to get him on? Discussion and possible vote, highway union contract. We're not ready on that, we can table that one. Motion to table the highway union contract. There a motion to table that?
Yeah, motion to table the highway union contract.
Are there a second?
Second.
All in favor of table on the highway union contract till we're, we're ready?
Aye.
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 Motion to table water and sewer union contract.
Water and sewer union contract, motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second on that. All in favor of table on the water and sewer union contracts?
Aye.
Unanimous. Police Department Union Contract, Bill, you want to speak on that?
Yeah, motion to, I guess it would be to approve, their side has to ratify, the police department's union contract per their, per their, per our negotiated agreement.
Okay, we need to vote that in.
Open.
In open session.
It's for a one-year period?
Is a, the contract is for a one-year period. It calls for a 2% increase. And it calls for an increase in their detail from $55 an hour to 60. All other items in the contract will remain the same through June 30th of 2022.
Okay, and you'll put that in the form of a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Approval of the pines for the Speedway reunion. According to Catherine, we haven't received any paperwork on that. We'll take a motion to table that until.
Motion to table the approval of the pines Speedway reunion.
Second.
Motion and a second to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Approval of the pavilion use for the Cubs Scouts, we haven't received any paperwork on that. We'll entertain a motion to table that.
Motion to table approval of pavilion use for the Cub Scouts.
Second.
A second, motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous. Discussion and votes relative to the community trail project.
Ah, look at this. Got something we can talk about.
Who's going to start?
Um, I will, if I may, Mr. Chair. Rebecca Oldham, Director of Economic Development.
Yeah.
So I figured we could take these as they're listed on the agenda. So this is all relative to the community trail that has been something that the town has been working on since about 2014. We have received confirmation that we will be funded for the entire construction through the state, so that's about $3 million. So we're just wrapping up all of the final design permitting and lease details with National Grid, so that's what brings us here this evening. The first is that we would like the board to vote on the, or to vote to execute the order of taking. There are two properties that required easements, one of those properties being 441 Main Street. There was a small 228-square-foot permanent easement that was donated to the town. There's also a temporary easement that is situated behind the sidewalk, so there will need to be some backfill and some loam and seed, so it's just temporary. The other property is 233 School Street. This is a small four-square-foot permanent easement. And then there's also a small temporary easement with the same type of ordeal where you'd have to do the backfill in the sidewalk and the loam and the seed, et cetera. That easement was not donated. So the first is a document that was drafted by town, town council, approved by town council for the order of taking, as well as two milars that have been given to Catherine for signature if the board so chooses to get reported at the Registry of Deed with the order of taking so that we can finalize the easements.
What was the first address you had, Rebecca?
441 Main Street.
I'd like to make a motion that the board issue an order of taking for 421 Main Street as well as 233 School Street.
Okay, a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jason?
I think we need to hear from the gentleman up there for public comment before we vote.
Oh, okay.
I have discussion points, though, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Yes, sir. Christopher.
Okay, there you are. Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me weigh in on this important project for the town of Groveland. My name is Christopher Surratt. I am a resident, as actually three years today, resident of Groveland. I sit on the Open Space and Trails Committee. Michael Davis is on, on the call here tonight as well. And also, I am a civil engineer that specializes in roadway and trail construction as a day job. So I'm here tonight as an advocate of the community path. The town has done an incredible amount of work with their design consultant, with town staff, attorneys, et cetera, to get this project to where it is today. And where it is today is a really important part of the overall getting the project funded, getting it to construction, and ultimately to completion. In front of you today, you have an order of taking, the rights of entry, some insurance documentation, and the lease agreement with National Grid. Without these documents in place, the project cannot move forward. And we, as a town, risk jeopardizing state and federal money, as Rebecca alluded to, that will pay for the construction of this project. So this is a big inflection point in the process. Because once we have this final design plan, we'll go into Mass DOT for approval, and then the project will get awarded and into construction. So, you know, I know from working with Mass DOT and the state on projects such as this that, you know, getting this information approved on a local level with, you know, limited amounts of pushback and everyone's on the same page is, is a plus because it shows that we, as a town, are acting as one unit, per se. So I just wanted to emphasize the importance of, of the documents in front of you tonight, and looking forward to getting this project approved on a local level and then getting funding allocated with the state and federal government. And hopefully, we have a, a great community path here in town in two or three years, and, and look to, to finish the connections with a budding, a budding municipality. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, feel free. But I just wanted to stress the importance of, of the documents in front of you and how it relates to the overall project.
Thank you. Any, any questions for? None.
No, it's a great project.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Mike, anything further to add? Come on. Okay, any questions?
I have a question, Mr.
Go ahead.
Question number, Becky, you said one of those easements was not donated.
That's correct.
Can you expand upon that? We have to pay for it, or?
Yes, we did get an appraisal for the easement, and as part of our budget request that was approved at town meeting, we did incorporate that payment as part of that allocation in CPC funds.
And how much was that?
$800.
$800, that's all for that easement?
For four, four foot.
And the funding for that is CPA funds?
Yep.
And that passed that town meeting?
It did pass a town meeting.
That's already been resolved, there's, there's nothing that hasn't been paid for through CPA, or anticipated.
That is correct, sir.
Be paid for through CPA.
That is correct.
Will there be any additional costs? Is this the final, is, is this the light at the end of the tunnel? You get the, the free taxpayer money from the state and maybe the federal government for $3 million? Free, everybody. Yeah. And then this is done? What else we got lurking that's going to cost us money?
So there will be additional costs associated with the coverage of insurance long-term. Their National Grid is still going to be the owner of the actual corridor, we're only leasing the property, and therefore, they're requiring us to carry additional insurance. So that is going to be covered immediately with the funds allocated through CPC. But as you suggested, long-term, it is something that the town will have to consider as to how they will bundle of future policies for the insurance and how they can get those rates down based upon the policy for VZ, the policy for the town, and now the policy for the trail.
If I'm, I hear you correctly, the CPA funds can't be used for operating costs going forward, but they can be on the initial.
That is correct.
On the initial, while it's still in the construction or work in progress?
To get the project to where, to be completed, yes. Once the project is completed, CPC funds cannot be used for ongoing continued maintenance.
And how much lead time do we have on that? Is that going to impact this year's covered budget, or is this something that's going to happen two years out, we have some time to react?
Next year. So not this coming fiscal year, but the following fiscal year, we will need to figure out exactly how the town wants to move forward. And with the new TA in place, they could actually negotiate better rates for your insurance policies.
You have any idea what the cost is?
I do, that is one of the other items on the list. I can jump to that if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Well, we have a motion and, and a second.
It's a lead, it's discussion, though, I just, it's connected to my voters, it's going to cost us any more money is what I'm, I'm thinking about.
So there is an additional expense. So I did go out and I spoke with our current provider, provider Maya. And then I also had a conversation with the carrier who carries for VZ Memorial Park, AM Winds. And then I also found another group, CRC Group, and they came back with a couple of prices. Maya being the highest with the additional cost per the actual lease agreement that National Grid requires, the $4 million umbrella, as well as the waiver of subrogation, and then also the additional insured. That total was $5,572. The CRC Group was $4,672.80. And then we just got word from the other carrier that does VZ, and they said they could potentially get us, worst-case scenario, $2,444. However, they have not finalized that number, but it would be anything, it would be cut in half, or it would be prorated because the policy for VZ ends in October.
Oh, okay.
And years past, I, I think there were some discussions, if my memory serves me correctly, that there would be fundraising efforts, maybe whatever, mile markers or whatever you want to call them, to try to get some sponsorship and some donations to maintain it so that it wouldn't burden the, the taxpayers. Is that still a plan? That it's not just going to be expected that the taxpayers put the whole bill for this?
That is correct, but sound financial management doesn't rely on fundraising efforts, so the town will have to take the liability. But yes, there will be fundraising activities and other activities related with the, the raising of funds to help support the insurance, as well as the continued maintenance of the trail moving forward, cleanup, et cetera. To say that it's going to 100% be covered by the friends would not be an honest statement.
If we were short on funds and we could not pay for the bills on the, maintaining it, would it be shut down? I mean, you have to keep it open. Is there any obligation to keep the trail open at all?
There would be an obligation to carry the insurance, and there would probably be a breach of contract with whatever you had for National Grid if you did not have that insurance in place.
So it would be a long term, if the, the contract looks like it's.
Ninety-nine years.
99 years, so we would have to.
Correct.
Make sure that that happens for 99 years.
Right, correct.
Unless you nullify the easement. Then what, you got to give the money back?
I don't know about that, but they have a nice trail that they can use.
All right.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, I'll make a general comment. I know this, this project has received overwhelming support in our community. I've spoken personally with many people who have been waiting for this and are looking forward to it, and so I think this is a wonderful addition to our town, and the cost of the insurance, if we do have to pick it up out of a $22 million budget, is not going to be a budget breaker. So I'm really happy to hear this is moving forward so quickly. Thank you for your work.
Okay, we, any further discussion? None. We have a motion on the floor and a second to execute the order of taking. Do you want to handle each one of them individually, Bill?
Well, you know, I made the motion to, for my, the order of taking on 421 Main Street and 233 School Street.
Yep.
Both at the same time.
Okay, and that was a, was a second on that, who seconded it?
I may have.
Kathy? Any further discussion on the order of ta, uh, order of taking for 233 School Street and 441 Main Street? See, and none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Execute right of entry for temporary easement.
So this is for a small town-owned parcel that actually abuts the 441 Main Street parcel. It's a small vacant 10,000-square-foot lot that acts as entry into the substation in the back for the Groveland Municipal Light Department. Mass DOT is just requiring that the town authorize construction vehicles to access that particular area for the construction of work as needed, just for the period of construction.
Where do you get 10,000 square feet as a, as a small piece of property?
It's a very, very small, small, small sliver. It's a very, very small, small, small sliver of property. It really just abuts the actual corridor itself and acts as entry into the back substation.
You could build a house on ten thousand square feet.
Yeah, but I don't think you can access it from that location behind the substation.
Only in Malden, Salem, maybe. Geez, it sounds like something.
You could put a three-family house up there.
Yeah, I mean.
That's what Groveland wants to see, let's change some zoning.
I think you could put a forty B on that and get about a hundred units in there.
No, no, we don't need that.
Build ten stories tall.
Motion to approve the execution of the right of entry for temporary easement.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second, motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimous. Authorized insurance.
So, because we have three separate quotes with the final not being confirmed as of yet, I would ask that the board of selectmen authorize that I be able to enter into or have the town entering into agreement with the lowest-priced carrier for the initial July until next July. Or you could also take a vote to just go with the lowest one as presented as the two thousand four hundred and forty-four policy.
You may get something lower than that?
They might be able to, that's why I thought that it might be better to have the vote so you don't have to go back and forth as to the lowest one of the three.
Okay, what wishes the board?
So, motion to authorize Ms. Oldham to procure insurance for that rail trail in the amount not to exceed three thousand dollars. That give you enough leeway?
That works perfectly.
Second.
Motion and a second to authorize the insurance not to exceed three thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Dan.
All the coverage is the same, right? It's apples to apples here, and it's required as part of the negotiation process with the utility?
That is correct, whatever National Grid had required, and then the additional requests were from Mass DOT to be a certificate holder, not an additional insured, which sometimes can cost an additional, can be additional. But under the last three, they were not included. But those were the requirements of National Grid, correct?
And does that cover, does that coverage include whatever construction or whatever's going to be done? I mean, the trail, can you talk about that?
Mass DOT, Mass DOT per their construction and per the bid requirements that they'll put out on July tenth, will have all of the specifications for the contractors to hold certain insurance for the actual construction of the trail. This is just really a formality at this point because you're not really going to get many people who are going to be walking the trail.
Right, it's going to change. The policy will be more, the liability will go up?
No, 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 it won't change in that regard, but it's just not as, it's just a formality for now for National Grid to say that we, because we're entering into the lease agreement, we have the insurance in place. It won't increase once the trail has been constructed, but you're not, you're going to get more people using it, but it's still not going to increase the price as of what we understand right now.
Okay. You need a binder.
None. Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second to authorize maximum of three thousand dollars for insurance. Any further discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Execute lease agreement with National Grid.
So, this is the last, the last one I have for you. As we just discussed, we had worked it out so that the insurance has to be in place by July one, not the signing of the actual document itself, so we don't have to be worrying about paying for just a couple of days. So, that's all been negotiated. Town council has been going back and forth with National Grid council for the last three months on this document. They have heavily vetted it and looked at it from all angles in terms of the town, and they have signed off on the actual document. So, before you is the ninety-nine-year lease with National Grid for the corridor for the community trail.
Motion to approve the execution of the National Grid lease agreement for the next ninety-nine years, sixty-six of which I probably won't be alive for.
We won't be here.
Motion and a second to execute lease agreement with National Grid for another ninety-nine years, or for ninety-nine years. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, yes.
Dan, you might be around in ninety-nine years.
Yeah, I might.
Go ahead.
How much is it going to cost us?
How much is it what going to cost us?
The lease, ninety-nine years, zero, free?
Yes. Well, like you said, nothing is free.
Nothing is free, it's all taxpayer dollars, you pay it to the governor, and they give you back some of it, you're supposed to thank them for being Santa Claus, so yeah, it's all free.
But National Grid has not asked us for any money.
The National Grid, we like big corporations in Massachusetts, they actually do something good, right?
Sometimes it works out.
Fantastic, thank you.
No further questions, Mr. Chair?
Very good.
Just a point of clarity, I like to thank the right people.
Well, I'll make sure that in ninety-nine years.
So, I don't know who the president or CEO is, you know, the utility, but thank you for not charging Groveland.
Okay, a motion on the floor and a second to execute lease agreement with National Grid. Any further discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
While Ms. Oldham is here, I know her and I have had numerous discussions regarding this whole thing, and there was, last conversation we had was June seventh was too early of a date, but June twenty-second, we're going to be too late for a date, is that still?
Nope, so we worked it out, so National Grid felt, they realized that we needed a quick turnaround in order to meet Mass DOT's timeframe for the July tenth bid documents, so they actually were able to get the lease turned around quickly, so they have it for this meeting. So, those documents have been given to Catherine as well as the Mylar, so we are all set, as long as you sign and execute those documents this evening, we should be all set.
So, you no longer need another meeting between now and then?
I do not.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, 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 listen, I know I was busy today, I meant to contact you to see if you still needed, but thank you for getting that all done, and now we don't have to have anything, so.
Yeah, I thank National Grid for that one, they turned it around quickly, thank goodness.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you both for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you guys have done, it's incredible.
Next, custodial coverage for the Pines over the Fourth of July weekend. At this point, Fourth of July weekend, we don't have any coverage for the bathrooms, to clean the bathrooms. The custodian and the backup custodian are not available. So, what did you wish? Bill, this is your, this is your baby down here at the Pines. Are you around on the Fourth of July weekend to handle that stuff?
I'm around on the Fourth of July weekend if somebody wants to show me what to do. I'd be glad to do it, you know, because it was closed last, it was closed on one Fourth of July weekend or Labor Day, and it was just, it was sad because it's a huge weekend, it falls on a Friday this year, or no, Saturday, right? Sunday? So, it's a Monday holiday, Bill, for the most of us. It's going to be between boaters, softball, baseball, you know, just the little kids hanging around in the playground. Not to have that bathroom open for that weekend is just, you know, we've got this beautiful bathroom, it should, and I can't tell you the number of people that just gush over that when they come to this park, how nice and clean they are and how available they are, and it's great not to have to go to a border party or run behind the bushes. And there are so many people that really use that facility, that if I have to clean it, I clean it. Show me how. I don't care, I don't mind rolling up my sleeves and getting dirty, when stuff has to get done, it gets done, I don't complain, you just do it.
Okay.
Go ahead, she's got something to say.
PD said that they could close at night, so you wouldn't have to go at night to take care of that, but each morning, please, we need to be supplies stocked, bathrooms cleaned, I think the floor is done or something. Steve could set up, I'm telling you for sure.
Yeah, but my preference would be to do that at night, so that when they open the bathroom doors, it's already been sanitized, everything's already ready to go.
I think that's what they're looking for, someone to open.
I'll open.
Open? Usually the police department opens and they close.
I guess they're not doing that anymore.
Since when? Really?
Yeah.
Give me a key.
You want to do it, Jason?
You open, I'll close.
When did you see?
We'll split it.
Did you try like Servpro, anything like that, nobody will come?
You know what?
I mean, it's not that much.
We don't have the money, number one.
It's not that much.
Yeah, I know it's not that much, but you know what?
People use that park, so.
Sometimes, you got to do what you got to do.
Okay.
And if he's going to help, if he's going to volunteer to do half, I'll do half, we'll make it a great weekend for everybody that visits the Pines, right, Jason?
Absolutely.
So, we'll talk later and we'll figure, you open, I'll close, and we'll get the job done between us.
Well, thank you both.
He's shaking his head.
Well, thank you both for stepping up.
Yep.
I don't think we need a vote on that.
No, it's wonderful.
Next, approval of property use for a wedding at the water tower on September fifth. According to Catherine, we haven't had any paper, any other paperwork on that, so we'll entertain a motion to table that.
Excuse me, the gentleman emailed me and said that they were rescinding their request.
Okay.
They changed their mind and they're not going to use the water tower.
Okay, so.
That came, I think, about six o'clock.
We take no action on that. Next, discussion of liquor license fees for VZ Park. Somebody, hi, go ahead, Mike.
I would ask the board to table this to your next meeting.
Okay.
Motion to table the discussion on liquor license fees for VZ Park.
Second.
Motion and a second to table discussion on liquor license fees for VZ Park. It's not debatable, all in favor?
Aye.
Does that encompass all of these requests?
Jason, opposed?
Yeah, I'm going to be opposed.
Okay, four in favor, one opposed. Next, approval of liquor license for Linda Broderick on August first, 2021, for a private event at VZ Park.
I'm sorry, this was one of the ones, that's why the fee discussion needed to take place, because they can't get approved without the fees being collected or not being collected.
Did you hear that, Mike?
Yeah, no, we'll pay the fee on both of these.
Oh, VZ will?
VZ Park will do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That should be, that would be okay with them? Okay, so, approval of liquor license for Linda Broderick on August first, private event at VZ Park, is there a motion for that? Maybe with an amendment that VZ Park is going to be paying for the liquor license.
Just so we can have the discussion, I guess I'll do it, I'll make a motion, we have, we approve the liquor license for Linda Brodet on August first, 2021, for a private event at VZ Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second on that, go ahead, Bill.
So, discussion is, VZ Park is going to pay for the liquor license?
That fifty-dollar fee for this one and the other one because we're not ready to discuss any changes to your recent decision to charge for every one-day liquor license, so. It'll be up to us to come next time and discuss that.
Is, so, you're taking the liquor license out, not?
No, 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 but we'll pay the amount, we'll, we, the park will pay the extra money towards the fee in lieu of asking the folks to pay for it.
Where are you getting the extra money?
Well, we have to take it out of the revolving fund.
Is that, is that like?
Well, a hundred dollars isn't going to break us this time.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if that's all legal?
Yeah.
All the other, every insurance certificate, so all, everything is on it?
Yes.
I have no further questions then.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So, this fee is obviously somewhat of a problem. Did we vote this recently? I don't recall the discussion of this fifty-dollar fee.
Well, there used to be no fee for any liquor licenses.
Right.
And then, I believe in 2019, the board voted to start charging a fifty-dollar fee, and that includes all the annual liquor licenses, so, you know, any restaurant or whatever in town that has a liquor license, they pay fifty dollars for the annual liquor license renewal, so.
Well, we're, well, we're charging the annual fee to each incident, so that's.
Yes, for a one-day license, so.
That doesn't seem right, yeah, that's not right. I mean, I don't really like to see one agency in town paying the other agency in town. I don't know if there's a workaround tonight, but it seems very ridiculous to take from the revolving account of VZ Park, fifty dollars every time they have an event. Certainly, there haven't been many events, and they need to start getting things up and running, and if they're paying fifty dollars every time they have an event, they're losing revenue and they're not building up the revenue we need them to have to be more self-sustaining, so it's like a self-defeating thing to do this, fifty dollars for each event. I, I don't believe I would have intentionally ever voted for anything like that, it's ridiculous. Yes.
Dan, you have something to weigh in?
I have something.
Go ahead.
On this one, it sounds like you're going to pay yourself, or it's coming out of the revolving account. Do you charge other fees to rent the?
Oh, yes.
So, it's, it's not like it's, the costs aren't being defrayed or you're not charging the end user for the event, you're charging for it.
Right.
So, does it matter if you get twenty-five or fifty bucks, don't, aren't you just going to charge them X to?
Well.
Get the number you need in the grand scheme of things?
Yes, but on the other hand, liquor licenses are a problem because the costs include also the, besides this fee, if we're going to add that on, you know, they're paying to rent the facility, then they also have to pay for the deep four-hour detail officer, that comes to roughly about four hundred dollars, and they have to carry their own insurance, which depending upon how they do that, either they can get a rider on the homeowner sometimes, or they, when they pay to have the bartender come, the bartender can include the insurance in the fee that they pay for that. So, what it ends up costing the, you know, what it will cost, say, for each of these folks is approximately a thousand dollars just to have the ability to have the alcohol there and have a bartender there to serve it, have the insurance, have the detail officer, and now to pay the fifty-dollar permit fee.
But, I guess what I'm, what does VZ, what does VZ get? Because you're paying the detail, you don't make money off that, the insurance guy gets the money, so what's in it for you?
Just the rental fee.
Okay, so that, so what's the rental fee?
Well, it depends on what they're doing, you know, it could be, it could be, if they just had a small party, it could be two hundred and fifty dollars. If they're having a wedding, it could be two thousand dollars. It just depends on what they're doing. But, you see, what happens is that because it's so expensive to have liquor, you're not going to do it unless, maybe if you have a wedding, because obviously, if you're going to pay two thousand dollars to rent the place for a wedding, to pay another thousand dollars for the liquor, you know, you're going to do it. But if you wanted to have a small birthday party with, you know, forty of your friends, you're not going to spend a thousand dollars to have liquor there.
I get it, so it's economy of scale, but the point is, you can add that, whatever, if you're going to absorb the fifty dollars on that, can you add that to the rental fee?
Well, yes, we can, but you see, it's a, it's a losing game because everything keeps being added to it, and every time there's an additional cost.
You're not competitive.
Less likely people are going to do it.
Gotcha.
And then we, you know, they'll go somewhere else where they don't have to pay that much.
Because the other facilities have year-round liquor licenses and don't have to pay per event.
Right, exactly. Or they, they don't require you to have detail officer, maybe they have a private security guard that they pay less money, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways to cut the costs down.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Did Ellen want to weigh in?
I'm not sure she's on, if you were wondering about the revolving account and if it's got to pay whatever.
Ellen, you won?
Ellen, you won?
Yes.
Ellen, you won?
Yes.
Yes.
Feedback.
Heard that three times.
You did.
Alright, try it again, Ellen. Is that better?
Yep.
No, I didn't get a thing.
Okay, try that. Is that better?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Is there a question I'm answering?
Well, we were, we were looking at approval of a liquor license for VC Park, and Mike had said that VC Park would pay for the liquor license. Something you wanted to weigh in on that?
I didn't hear the very end of that, I'm sorry.
Oh, um, Mike had said that instead of charging the, uh, the event holder, that VC Park would pay for the liquor license for, uh, for the, these two events at VC. Did you wanna weigh in on any of that?
So this is a one-time, one-day liquor license?
That's correct.
I believe the yearly ones are like 1,300. I don't know when the vote happened to charge, um, for the daily ones, but we should. Otherwise, I believe it becomes our responsibility somehow. Um, we could check with council on that, of course. Uh, the whole point of having, it would really be the person throwing the event paying for it, as it is their liquor license. As they should, cause it's a one-time fee, it shouldn't be covered by taxpayer dollars. So if we pay for it out of the general fund, you know, if VC's collecting a fee, using that fee to pay for it, then it's not taxpayer dollars.
We're not talking about taxpayer dollars. Yeah, that's a misunderstanding.
General fund, it's taxpayer dollars.
Yes, it's not gonna be taxpayer dollars, it's coming out of VC Park fund. Um, okay.
Mr. Chair, can I just?
Go ahead.
Flaherty, why isn't it just a waiver?
Correct.
Can you waive it? I don't understand why it comes out of the revolving fund. You're either gonna charge for it or you waive it.
Well, I mean.
Can you waive the fee?
No, but the town.
The town requires a fee be submitted, so you, it's not within your authority to waive it.
Mr. Chair, I think I can clarify a lot of this.
Cause I don't understand what's supposed to happen. You have to charge a fee, so if you want, if you're not gonna charge the customer, then someone else has to pay for it. You can't waive it unless the board waives it? Can we waive it?
Again, let me try to explain.
Please.
I remember this vividly because when I looked at the, uh, the fees we were charging for liquor license around the town, that the amounts were antiquated. So it was my idea to almost double the cost around the board. But as with, you know, people, we're not, we're not perfect, we make mistakes. It seems that one of the unintended consequences of those actions is hampering you now in doing business in a competitive way. And that was not the intention of increasing the yearly liquor licenses to the establishments around, like the, you know, Groveland Bell Bridge or whatever. So I, I think we should take immediate action to remedy that, remedy that, so that you're not in a competitive disadvantage with your competitors, but you're still allowed to carry on business. Should we, I mean, in your opinion, is it as simple as, um, making your liquor license similar to everybody else's? It lasts for a year?
Well, see, I didn't wanna discuss that tonight, but I'll briefly tell you what, the town cannot have a liquor license itself, so.
It's too bad.
It's real disappointment.
Yes, so we have to have a third party, you know, so in that case, you know, that's why these one-day licenses work, because it's the people who are having the party who actually have the liquor license. But what we would like to do is to have a third party have a full annual license. So that, because, because when we do that, we have better control over the parties. We can cover the insurance costs altogether. And most importantly, if we have the liquor license, we also can sell the liquor and make more money on it. And so that's, you know, that would make sense for us because we're, you know, we, we need more revenue coming in to be able to support, you know, some of the things that we voted to do, like add another staff person. And also pay the insurance, you know, so those, those kind of things. So that's where we're going. And like I say, I'm not really fully ready to vet that with you tonight because you really need to see our business plan on how that makes sense to do it. So, you know, if tonight you could waive the $50 fee for these two, that would help.
Kathy, Kathy, Mike's got the floor. Mike, I'm sorry, you interrupted, go ahead.
No, I wasn't.
So, so it would help if you could waive the fee for the two tonight. You know, if you wanna waive the fee completely, I wouldn't say no to that as far as day permits. But eventually, we are going to pursue a full-year permit through a third-party organization to solve, partly to solve this problem.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that, um, the board approve the waiver of the liquor license for Linda Brodette and for Erica and Eric London. I thought Lindro was there for a minute, I said, oh, that's a pretty good.
We'll handle them both separately.
Okay.
So you wanna approve the liquor license for Linda Brodette and waive the license, waive the liquor license fee?
Waive the liquor license fee.
Second.
And there's a motion in a second, any further discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous.
Motion to approve the liquor license for Erica and Eric London on June 26, 2021, for a private event at VC Park and waive the $50 liquor license fee.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Jason, you had something?
No, not on this one.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Mike, before you leave, there is a third liquor license that we've already approved pending the collection of the fee.
Motion to waive the third liquor license. Do you know who's it for? Just throw me your name.
The top one.
Top one? That would be John and Patty Markins.
Motion to approve the Marcos's liquor license and waive the $50 license fee.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous.
And you'll work with us to figure this all out, so.
Okay, um, appointments.
Wait a minute, did we ever get Mr. Boyer back?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gave up, I think.
He gave up. He went to the Bruins game, I'll bet.
What, what happened?
I, I don't think that he was ever able to get connection.
He sent us a notification, if I could speak to that.
Okay, uh, go ahead, we'll go back to waste management contract.
Okay, so he was unable to wait through our long executive session, and so what he'd like to know from us tonight, please, is whether we are accepting the original or the revised offer. And I believe we are accepting the revised offer dated April 21st for a five-year contract. We appropriated the correct sum at the town meeting. And he would like to know about a change in the barrel limits. As we spoke with him on our Zoom, we were up at four barrels, which is unprecedented nowadays. And he recommended a reduction to two barrels and unlimited recycling. He does suggest that if we decide to go with the reduction to two, that we make the effective date either August or September at the earliest to allow for the overbag program to get up, which is the third point that he talked to us about, um, the original bag purchase. He said there'd be a bit of an upfront cost to the town, but we can work that out and discuss that afterwards. We need a decision tonight with a signed agreement by the end of the week. He would produce the agreement with these costs in it, as we've discussed already, and the barrel limit and the bag program.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that there was, maybe was an adjustment of the route. Some of the days are, uh, some of the days are, uh, too many and, uh, and they would bear the cost to send out to the residents.
That is correct, Chairman. Um, he did say that his offer to us from the very start was, was contingent on us allowing a change in the route. He has said that on Wednesdays, his truck is out for like 13 hours. Often, the, um, place that they dispose of the trash is closed. So you can see that towards the end of the week is where the problems are happening. Um, he is addressing it as quickly and as best they can right now, but they do need to redistribute the homes on the route. Those of you, excluding myself, I don't believe was on the board when they first came in. They came in because the original carrier lost their license or stopped.
Bankrupt.
Bankrupt. So they came in and made a real quick study of the town and, and went at it, um, and they've discovered that, you know, that they have to redo this route because it is hitting rather heavily at the end of the week on the trash pickup. There are a lot of issues happening then. He has been emailing Lori on the Board of Health. Um, she's now in direct contact on these issues. So she's getting emails about when there's a problem, what roads it's affecting, so she's in the loop. I've asked to be in the loop. Um, Deb Hull, Chairwoman of the Board of Health, is also in this email loop. Anybody else that wants their name on the email to receive these updates, he says he's open to any member of the board, um, because they are working at it. They're sincere in their intention, but they do need to take probably, I would think it might take them 30 days or so to study it and redo the route, redistribute it. Then they would notify all the residents, they will bear all the cost of that. Um, they'll prepare the route statement for our town website, they'll do that for us. They'll put these costs in the contract, send it to us, and then it goes to our attorney.
Any questions? Dan?
My question is, we're gonna pay, pay more and then basically pick up half the trash? We're gonna go from four to two? So we pay more and get half?
Um, Mike could explain that to you if you'd like.
Please.
They're going to pick up the trash, and we ask them for ways to encourage more recycling and hopefully lower the tonnage cost because even though you vote the contract, the tonnage cost can vary. And he's been finding that with the four barrels, our tonnage is going up very quickly. This would hopefully push more things towards the recycling, and then hopefully with recycling perhaps changing and becoming more cost-effective, the town could save money. This is an attempt to help the town save money.
Why wouldn't we go to three? I mean, it's, you're cutting it in half. It seems kinda radical to me to cut it in half, and I'm not so sure I can recycle everything.
Most towns do.
You know, it's plastic and paper and glass, so what else can you do?
Here is, well, there is something you can do. If you feel that you need to put out more than two barrels, you can purchase the bags. But what this does is it shifts the cost for, um, trash disposal above two barrels, which most homes can do with two barrels. Will shift the cost to those homes that are not, are going above two barrels. And yes, you can buy the bags and you would pay a little bit additional, but it would hopefully start to control the cost of this trash contract, which is going up significantly.
What if we stuck with the four barrels? I mean, what's?
But it's gonna continue to go up even more significantly. We're not gonna get a handle on this. No other town is doing four barrels. We're, we're out of alignment right now.
So how many are doing three? I mean, it just, it seems like you're cutting it in half, and we're paying, what, more money for half the?
You know, Dan.
I'm just asking you.
I'm just saying that if you wanna go out and do a survey and find out, the thing is, this trash contract has to be done now. It wasn't our choice to have, be under the gun on this, um, but this is where we are. If you want a continuation of trash services, we need to approve this contract. I think that it's fair.
So we have no other choice?
It's fair, and I think that, um, the trash will get picked up. And you can put out unlimited recycling. If you wanna start to try to find ways for this town to manage the cost of this trash contract, you have to start making some strides. Two barrels is a lot of trash. Every week, plus recycling barrels, as many as you want. That's a lot of trash.
I'm just looking at the contract. So under the current contract, we get four barrels. Now they wanna increase the, what?
I, I put out one barrel a week and that.
They're gonna increase it what percentage, and then we get half the pickup, so it seems like.
We're not getting half the pickup. They're going to pick up all the trash. You just need to, some people might have to buy the bags. So it is a bit of a shift in cost in the long run to people that are throwing out more trash than two barrels.
And what's a bag? Your standard trash bag, or is it, that's just where you buy those here? I mean, is this?
We would sell it here. It would also help raise some revenue for the town. This was all discussed during the negotiations.
I'm not shooting the messenger at you. I mean, I just, I'm trying to understand. It sounds like we pay more, we get less, and it's another added-on user fee or cost that we never had before.
We would, we're gonna pay more regardless. Trash is an expensive, um, service right now.
They got us over a barrel?
We do, but I mean, if we wanted, if, yeah, I know.
Play on words on that one.
Yeah, pun intended. They seem like they got us over a barrel and didn't go out the bid.
But it seems reasonable to go to the two barrels, which is a lot of trash.
Can we, can we orchestrate them and say three?
You could do whatever you want, it's just you're reducing.
I mean, you can do, I'm not the board, I'm one of five.
Okay, I mean, I feel like two is reasonable, but go ahead and make a motion. We have to vote this contract one way or the other.
If they've been picking up four, there's people that put out four. I just, um, you know, I got a family of five, and I suppose if you got a family of two, you can argue you're subsidizing my family of five. But if I got five and I'm paying, then you got a family of 10, then I guess I'm subsidizing the family of 10, I mean, it's.
Even when I had all of my family at home, I didn't even know we had four barrels. I only put out two anyway, and then I recycled. Now I put out one.
But two will be built in. We don't have to buy stickers or anything like that, like other towns where there's not, there's not gonna be a plan for a sticker campaign.
Nope, no stickers.
Cause I hear, I hear people.
Have to buy the bags.
If you want more than two barrels.
So if you wanna put 10 bags out, you can.
Yep, you can buy 10 bags.
Spend the money and just leave them on the curb, and they have to take them that week.
Yes, they do.
There won't be any limit.
Correct.
So you can exceed the four. So is that a trade-off?
Well, we're gonna get some money in for that, which will help.
Defray the cost.
Of these ever-increasing trash contracts, they're just going up.
But right now, they'll only pick up four.
That is the limit on barrels, four.
But under the new system, if I'm buying bags, I could put 10 out there and they'll have to take them that week. They can't be sitting there when the truck comes.
No limit on bags, no limit.
Well, there's, I guess, a trade-off there, right? If you really had a big clean-out, you could pile up the sidewalk and.
Hold them till the next week.
Right? All right, I have enough info. That's the best we could do, over a barrel.
Do you wanna make a motion to that?
I make a motion to approve the revised proposal for the trash with waste management dated April 21st, 2021. It's a five-year contract, as specified, um, that we are going to, two barrels with a bag sale program, but that we're going to hold off implementing down to two barrels, to two barrels till, what do you think, September 1st?
Till September 1st.
Yeah, September 1st, 2021.
With unlimited recycling too?
With unlimited recycling, yes.
Recycling's always unlimited, cause that's where we make our money, if we can make any money.
Any change in the, in the routes.
Okay, for that? Yeah, if the commodity is high, we get, we get, we get money back, a refund.
Okay, the motion on the floor, was there a second? No second?
Yeah.
I second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Jason, did you wanna say something on that?
No, I'm good.
You had your hand raised.
I'm good.
Oh, okay. All right, any further discussion? Uh, we're ready to take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, moving on.
One additional point, Mr. Chairman. So Catherine will be receiving this contract, and it will need to be signed this week. Um, so if everyone could make arrangements to swing by and sign it, at least we need a majority of us on it. It'd be nice to have everybody sign it. Thank you.
Appointments. Appointment of Hayden Flaherty of Haverhill, Mass. to part-time seasonal groundskeeper at the cemetery effective 6/8/21 for 1350 an hour for up to 19 hours a week.
Motion to appoint Hayden Flaherty of Haverhill, Mass. to part-time seasonal groundskeeper at the cemetery effective June 8th, 2021, up to what, 19 hours a week at a rate of 1350 per hour.
I second that.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'm accusing myself of both appointments, as my husband is a commissioner.
Okay. Four in favor, one abstention.
Accusing. Different.
Mike Solani of Amesbury, Amesbury, Mass. to part-time seasonal groundskeeper at the cemetery effective 6/8/21 for thirteen fifty per hour up to nineteen hours a week.
Motion to approve Mike Solani of Amesbury, Massachusetts, to part-time seasonal groundskeeper at the cemetery effective June 8, 2021 for up to nineteen hours at a rate of thirteen fifty an hour.
I second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm accusing.
Four and one abstaining.
Accused.
What's that?
I'm accusing because my husband is a commissioner.
You've been abstaining.
Yep. Different from abstaining.
Okay, selectmen's time. Jason, you got anything?
No.
Kathy, you got anything?
Actually, yes. Really doesn't give me any pleasure to try to say this to Mr. Chairman, but I feel that I am treated very abruptly by you in meetings, and you don't treat the other members at the same level of abruptness. And I would like to be treated in a more civil manner because I've watched you offer the floor to other members during meetings. I've gotten comments from people on this board about this. I've gotten comments from people watching the show, and they said, Kathy, you need to stand up and say something. I mean, I have a pretty thick skin. I can take a few jobs now and then, but this has been kind of every single meeting, and it's just, it's not civil. I just would ask to lower your tone and be a little more civil to me, please.
Okay. Dan, you got anything?
No, just pointed discussions. I mean, and what's going on with the pines maybe going forward? It can be an agenda item. With, you know, twenty-five dollars an event. I think there was some mention of there might be AAU baseball there. So I kind of like more information, and I think the people watching would like more information on what's going on down the pines. Somehow, we can discuss that or get some more information going forward. That's all. I'm just asking for that.
You want an agenda item on that?
Yeah, we could do that. I don't know if Bill's involved, but I haven't been involved with the pines, so, but, you know, appreciate the guys going down there on the Fourth of July. I'm gonna be out of town, but if I was around, maybe help out too. But I don't know, just want to see what's going on. There's benefits and burdens. I mean, on the one hand, fill it up. On the other hand, it's more traffic. Who will we benefit? People that live in town, residents or non-residents? So I just want to see the big picture on that, and I think some people that are watching also want to know what's going on. I don't know that it's a problem, but it's just, I'd like to get down there and throw a ball around with my kid once in a while and not need a permit from the Board of Selectmen to use the Babe Ruth Field, so you know.
So you want to schedule some time?
So again, I just, am I ignorant on it? I'm ignorant on it. So I think other people may be ignorant on it, maybe not as ignorant as I am, but I just need some information. If we could have an agenda item and just kind of have a pow-wow on that and brainstorm what's going on down the pines. I'd appreciate it.
Two weeks, are you okay for that?
Yeah.
Okay. We got, we can do that?
Specifics.
Specifics? Are we gonna go with the twenty-five-dollar fee per event? I mean, we talked about, you know, liquor licenses, what's fair, what's not. I mean, whenever you charge anyone, what are you charging for? What do you get back? Why? I haven't scrutinized that budget, but does the pines need money, for instance, to have coverage on the Fourth of July to pay somebody to go in there and clean the bathrooms? And maybe we should start with the answer and work backwards, figure out what we need for money to pay for services, for, you know, what people want for services, and then figure out how to get the money from which groups in the fairest way, I guess.
Yeah, I might suggest to you that you go back and watch some of the selectman meetings in the past, and a lot of the answers will be self-apparent, and they'll answer themselves.
Some of them might, but, you know.
A lot of them will.
The twenty-five dollars per event, is it a four-hour event, eight-hour event? I'm not sure that that has been clarified or concluded.
Yeah, it was. Again, if you review the notes the minute you get up to speed.
So maybe, maybe we'll revisit it, and maybe no one will care. So, but, new day, new way. Last year was a pandemic. Things are different now. Things are different now, and.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda.
One more thing, and I want people to stay tuned. A shocker that that, you know, virus come from Wuhan. Imagine that. Anyways, to be continued.
Bill, you got anything?
Yeah, misinformation doesn't get us anywhere. And you know what? It doesn't serve the people of Groveland well with just partisan garbage. That's all I can say. So let's, let's, let's make sure we're servicing the people of Groveland and not pandering to some giant, I don't know what, because it just doesn't serve anybody well.
The truth?
The truth is, the earth is not flat. That's the truth.
Kyrie said it was.
But there's so many people out there that want to tell you that the earth is flat, and I suggest to those people they seek serious psychological help, because they're not well. As far as my selectmen's time, I am in contact, and we've furthered negotiations with the use of the pines for the camp. I'll have more details later as we continue to have these discussions. High school building committee meeting is tomorrow, so I'll have more points to talk about next meeting. Rec committee meeting Thursday, so I'll have more points to talk about on that on Thursday. And I want to thank my fellow colleague, Selectman Naves, for stepping up to the plate and helping me out on July 4, and making sure that the citizens of Groveland get what they deserve out of Fourth of July at the pines. So thank you, Mr. Naves. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Anything else?
That's about it. That's my plate's full.
I just got just a short item. It came to my attention that a member of the Board of Selectmen was in Town Hall last week, Thursday to be exact, directing staff, doing administrative tasks outside the board's authority. The board never assigned this position to anybody, and it's a job, it's a position that was never voted on. Some of the staff members felt intimidated. They felt the board was not communicating with the staff members, and I would suggest that it be stopped until such time as the Board of Selectmen directs somebody to be doing that, taking it upon themselves to handle some of these administrative tasks that left for the employees. We'll leave it at that. Other than that, I don't have anything. Item's not anticipated at the time of posting. We have some from the town accountant. We have some requests for some transfers. Ellen, can you weigh in?
You there, Ellen?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you speak up?
Can you hear me now?
Somewhat.
Okay. I had to, I listened to it on my TV and then muted it, so you can hear me on this. So I missed what you said. I just heard town accountant and started changing everything.
You had some budget transfer requests that.
Yes.
Did you want to speak on that?
I gave, I believe it was last week, I sent them, updated them for the special town meeting article. I did add a couple that I was told about. We wanted to move, a small AC unit needs to be replaced at the police station, and it's about fifty-one hundred, but we have it in the facilities supplies account, so we just wanted to move supplies money over to repairs and maintenance. We had a small addition to pole workers went over fifty-seven dollars. So we just wanted to move that from the town clerk education expenses, and she's not going to have any more education expenses this year, so we wanted to move the rest of those into her supplies account. So they're all mainly, I try to keep them mainly within department. The finance director line, I'm still waiting on, well, not still waiting on, May and June for Mass Munifin are not in yet, which they wouldn't be. It's only June 6 or 7. But I think that's gonna come in a little lower, so I'm hoping to not have to use highway funds, or there's a very small amount from the fire inspector. I'd like to keep those within their department, so they can use them if they need them. But other than that, everything is as the sheet I gave you last week. We don't have to do the vote tonight, obviously. I think Ruth, it needs board approval and finance board approval. So I believe we spoke to Ruth, and she said they usually meet every third Wednesday, but she does not have to stick to that schedule to do the budgetary transfers. So I understand if people are not ready to vote on this this evening, and I can provide you further detail probably for the next meeting.
I think that that should be approved by Finance first and then come to the Selectmen.
Okay. As long as I get both votes.
Okay. Now, these figures, how close are these that you?
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Go ahead.
I think it is proper if the Board of Selectmen sends reserve fund transfers from us to the financial board. I believe it's, we have the responsibility as the official town administration board right now to review this at our next meeting, then approve it, and send it to the financial board. That's the proper procedure. That's our responsibility.
So you want the Board of Selectmen to review this first and then send it to the?
Yes, please.
Finance board.
Yep.
Ellen, do you have any problem with that?
No.
When, when are you gonna be closer? You've got the expected overage on a lot of these. You said there might be some adjustment on that?
The finance director line, I did very conservatively, so it's probably lower, significantly lower.
When, what's the cutoff date that you need this?
I would prefer them prior to year end, June 30, but we have until July 15.
Okay. All right. We'll try to get a better figure as we get closer. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we don't need to take a vote on that yet. The other thing was the Board of Health, are they, are there anybody from the Board of Health in there to weigh in on opening the Town Hall? Somewhere here, I had a, they had requested or suggested that the Town Hall open on, no, I'm not gonna find it, on June 1. And I, I don't know what happened with that date. I believe that the Board of Health should be weighing in on this. In my personal opinion, I think the Town Hall should have been open a while ago, but it didn't happen. But I, I was hoping that somebody from the Board of Health would be on so that we could discuss whether this is the Selectmen's option or the Board of Health's option. If anybody has any suggestions to make a vote that we open on a certain date, but we need to, we need the feedback from the Board of Health agent and the members of the Board of Health, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a sign on the front door that says it opens on June 15. Isn't it? Is there a sign there or not?
I didn't notice it.
I thought there was. There's several.
I think there's a sign. I don't think it's voted on.
There's a sign.
Go ahead, Jason.
I don't know what you want.
I thought we voted on it for June 1.
I thought, I thought we did.
By appointments, and that's what they put on the door.
June 15?
No, June 1 by appointments.
Yeah.
Yep.
The 15th.
Told you.
June what?
15th.
June 15.
And June 1 by appointments. That's on the door, too.
So it'll be.
So the Town Hall is currently open by appointment?
Yes.
But it really has been always open by appointment, technically.
No, they were not really letting people in.
You could, you could call up and meet and have somebody bring you in or just meet them out in the hallway. I mean, in the parking lot. Anybody want to weigh in?
So the 15th, it's business as usual? I mean, there's no restrictions? You don't have to call ahead? You just show, you come down?
It looks like, it looks like it's by appointment only. Is that what you read?
Until the 15th.
Yeah, please.
Then it's open. From now till the 15th is by appointment only.
It says it'll be opened by the 15th. I can bring the sign. It's also.
Oh, go ahead.
Public service announcement. We gotta get the facts right.
Get the facts right.
I know.
Put it on the website. That's why we have a website. Put it on the town, put it on the board. That's why we got a board.
Maybe we do that.
In living color, you can put it up there.
Open for business.
Open for business, right.
As usual.
Groveland Town Hall is open by appointment. Mass. are required to enter Town Hall. Town Hall will be fully open on June 15.
That's the sign I read.
Naturally.
Fully. We can put that on the board out there?
It was on the door.
On the door.
It's on the door.
I read it.
But maybe people drive them by.
It should be, it should be posted on the board. It should be posted on the website. Should be disseminated as many different ways.
Yeah, they're everywhere.
But first, I knew of it this morning, so.
Kind of like the vaccine.
So that must have been put on by the Board of Health?
I think so.
Oh, okay. Now, they checked it out with all the departments and, you know?
Nobody knew about it. Everyone walked in and saw this morning. Every department, they all asked me what was going on.
Well, we need to get some feedback from them to make sure they're all ready to go. Actually, we probably should go to the Board of Health. They're not ready.
You need the department's feedback?
Yeah, department feedback. Make sure they're all, they're all set up with the proper barriers or whatever, plexiglass.
Are we on unfinished business still?
You had something, Kathy?
Yes, I do. We had spoken with Sarah Hunter, our consultant on treasury services. She's, her work is very critical to our current situation as we're operating without a financial director, the town administrator. She is available to meet with the board. She told us on a Wednesday, and I believe Selectman McDonald said he'd need a week's notice, so I was wondering about Wednesday, June 16, as a meeting date with Sarah. Some of the items that I think that need to be addressed so that she can provide oversight would be the, any of the procurement large purchases out of free cash that were voted at town meeting for the police cruiser and the senior van. We have two employees retiring. I believe she's already consulted a bit with the staff on how to facilitate that. And we also have a borrowing article that was approved for the water and sewer, and at this juncture, she would probably be the most expert to be consulting on that issue as well. So I thought we could bring her in, discuss, or arrange it with us, and make sure that we're all on the same page. I think that she has, she says she can consult on the procurement. She can get advice as needed. She would not charge us anything more than what she's already charging us, and she could help with the water and sewer borrowing. She would just need the information to be provided to her from the departments involved. So that would be the point to meet with her.
You have to be on a Wednesday?
Yes, that's when. Yes, that's when she comes to work here. And you had said if you were given a week's notice, you could do it.
Yeah, just, what time of day? Kid's got basketball on Wednesday, so.
What time is the basketball start?
Oh, like 5:30.
Six thirty?
Five thirty, yeah. So probably later, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could meet earlier. We could meet earlier. I don't think it will take all that long. I mean, we can meet her at the end of her workday here, just to, to give her information and to make sure that, you know, she has a point of contact here. Because obviously, all of these, all of these types of issues would normally be handled by town administrator. They've been voted by the town meeting. We have two people retiring. We're going to just make sure that we have a smooth operation as we go forward for the next couple of weeks.
I can go earlier on that particular day. I don't know about anyone else, you know.
On the 16th?
Yep.
Uh, time?
That's what I'm waiting on. I'm
It's the end of her day. Three or four?
Yeah, she stays two days all day on Wednesday. She said she's flexible on time. You're, you asked for earlier, so I'm sure she would do earlier on Wednesday.
People have jobs. I don't know.
I'm out early enough, so it's not a problem for me.
You're out of school?
Um, that's my last day, I believe. I think it is. Yes, the 16th. What about Ms. Selectman O'Neill? Would you be able to make a five o'clock meeting?
Five o'clock.
Could you? Selectman Naves.
Is that okay with you, Dan?
I'm good, whatever.
Five o'clock?
Jason?
Yep.
5:00 PM?
Yeah.
How long would it take?
I don't think very long. I mean, she's, she gets right to the point. I think she's got the right background to, to give us the information we need.
Okay.
Excuse me, head, is that an open meeting, executive session?
Oh, open.
Open meeting, posted open meeting.
Yeah, right.
Well, the only, that's the only agenda item.
Correct, that's it. We're just, yes. That's a good question. Thank you.
Anybody got anything else? I think that was it. Under items not anticipated at the time of posting, correspondence.
I do have
Oh, I'm sorry.
one more, one thing. I've been remiss not to mention it so far. Today, I believe it was, our largest employer and our largest taxpayer in this town offered a clinic, a vaccination clinic, free of charge, as far as I know. The Johnson and Johnson, one shot, you're in and you're out. And I think considerable mention ought to be made that A.W. Chesterton did this out of their own free will and volition to help vaccinate as many people as we could. And I think they should be commended and recognized through and through for their commitment to the community, as well as the, the health of the community in general. Tremendous thing they did on their own. So I think they, I'd like to recognize that, that effort and what they did.
They were always very willing to step up and they're very community oriented, so I'll commend their efforts also.
If I might ask to cheer, I'd like to, if possible, present them with a citation of appreciation for what they did at our most recent available board meeting where we could invite some of their representatives to show our appreciation in more than just words. But with an actual citation from the town, recognizing that effort and commitment that they made.
Sounds good. We'll take care of that and get a letter over to them and, or phone call and invite them to the next meeting. Be able to take care of that quickly.
Terrific.
All right. Correspondence. National grid notification for foliage treatments. Senator Ta's request for Fourth of July activities. I had this in front of me, but I, with all this paperwork, I can't find it. But we don't have anything planned. Maybe Catherine, you could just email Senator Ta's office and just let him know that we don't have anything going on on that date.
But if you'd like to have something going on, tell him to contact me, because I've got a few ideas I'd love to share with him.
Fireworks?
Some road races, some bicycle contests. Come on, let's get the kids involved. Let's have some fun.
We also have Joe DeMore's email and an act repealing the Department of Finance and Budget. I guess that's going to go to their committee sometime this week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
I, I don't, this was just handed to me just before the meeting started from John Guilfoyle, Public Relations. He's looking for, it's a bill for nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars for, for services for the year. The problem with this is we're only budgeted for seventy-two hundred.
Yeah.
So we can discuss that. We, we can get together with the, with Ellen and I, I don't know how you, how you go from seventy-two to ninety-seven eighty-eight, but we'll figure something out with, we'll figure something out with the town accountant, if you're still there with us, Ellen. It looks like everything, we'll entertain a motion to
Motion to adjourn at 9:21.
Second. Just feedback.
Uh, who was that?
Feedback.
Oh, feedback. Entertainer motion for adjournment.
He did. I said second.
And then motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mike.